Good evening, welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting, it's July 2nd. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance and followed if you'd remain standing for the invocation from Pastor Joseph Gastineau from Revival Tabernacle Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for the honor to stand in, City Council, Chambers of Bellevue, Nebraska, one of the greatest cities in the world, I believe.
Here, here.
How do you feel?
Good.
Better now.
We want to give honor tonight, Bible said honor to whom honor, we want to honor our mayor, every city council member, our chief of police, Mark Elbert, Harry Guido, all those that are helping to watch over us and give us some safety, and all those that are serving in this city, we want to thank you. We don't take it for granted, we know you have put a lot of time and effort, thought, and I pray prayer into what you do. We thank you for all that you do, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this season in our nation. You see the condition, Lord, where we're at? We need you, Lord, we know we were founded upon Christian principles, and we thank you for your goodness, we thank you for your power and strength, and we ask you to help us, Lord, to continue to look to you. Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight, and I pray for every leader, Lord, in this city. Thank you for our mayor, our city council, all those that are serving. We pray that you will bless them, bless their families, bless their home, bless this city, the entire metropolitan area with peace, we pray. We pray, God, for the city workers, those that are laboring out on this heat, that you'll be with them and bless them, Lord. Bless this meeting now, we pray, in Jesus' name, and we thank you for all things, amen.
Thank you Pastor. Susan Roca.
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the chamber. Moved to item number five, Approval of Agenda Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports, 5A Approval of the Agenda, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item 5B Approval of Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Is there any council members that would like to remove an item? Councilman Cook?
Thank you Mayor, I'd like to remove item 10B.
Are there any other items? Councilman Shannon?
15B.
Any other items? Okay, we've removed item 10B and 15B from the consent agenda, they'll go onto the regular agenda in their proper position. Councilman Preister, sorry?
I would then move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Moved by Preister, seconded by Welch to approve the amended consent agenda, please vote.
All voting yes.
Just a comment on that.
On the consent agenda, one of the items is the luau for Jammers, and the owners are here tonight, but I just want to...
That was removed?
Oh, alright, never mind.
Okay. Moving to item number seven, Organizational Matters, we have none this evening. Number eight, Special Presentations, there are none this evening. Number nine, Approved Citizen Communication. 9A Request to Remove the Alarm Registration Fee Requirement Per Ordinance Number 3238. It is Kyle Roan in the audience. Okay, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name's Kyle Roan, I live at 1908 Madison Street here in Old Town. And I thank you for putting me at the front of the agenda, I was expecting to be at the end, so thank you very much for that.
You can wait for the whole thing.
But I appreciate that. Um, I just want to read from a prepared statement if that's okay, it won't take me but two minutes, and then I'll be open for questions. Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow citizens, thank you for allowing me to discuss this issue with you tonight. And on this week that we celebrate our 243rd year of independence from the great island across the pond, it's my honor and privilege and my responsibility to address you today concerning an unfair tax. And it's levied upon a select group of citizens by our government. A tax, according to Webster's Dictionary, is a charge usually of money imposed by authority or persons on property for public purposes. This tax is authorized by City Ordinance 3238, whereby citizens that have alarms are mandated to pay an annual registration fee of $25 because they are safety and security minded and own their own alarm system. This tax is levied by the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, but the annual perpetual revenue generated by this tax goes to Colorado Springs, Colorado, to support their economy. That revenue goes to purchase goods and services from their local businesses supported by their citizens and not the citizens of Bellevue. This tax established by City Ordinance 3238 mandates that the registration fee and any late fees be paid to the city administrator or their designate. The city administrator has designated a company whose name has changed several times, I think it's PMAM now, in Colorado Springs, Colorado. The agreement has been expired, is my understanding, since 2013. Moreover, in a text message received by Mr. Thompson, who's helped me greatly, so thank you sir, related to me that our proposed amendment to the City Ordinance 3238 wouldn't pass because the police and administration don't support it. So I guess it is all fitting that on this week of our 240th anniversary of independence from England, that I have this opportunity to address my fellow citizens and government officials proclaiming that this council and the mayor is here to represent the citizens of Bellevue, not the police department and not the city administration. Please make no mistake, it is from we the people that you derive your power to govern. According to records received from the city, roughly only one-third of alarm owners in this city, both commercial and residential, have been paying this tax and have permits and certificates. In meetings with Mr. Thomas, the police officials I spoke with cannot provide us any data that would show a causal relationship between this tax and reductions in false alarms. The police say that we need the registration to establish ownership. However, homeownership or any parcel of land in Sarpy County can be found simply by going to the GIS website that Sarpy County operates, or just by having collaboration with Sarpy County. The other way that we can do ownership is through the alarm company. Somebody has to pay that bill, so it should be easy to find out who owns that alarm. And this is so they can enforce any fines for false alarms. Research that I've done on my own also found several cities doing false alarm reduction programs. Of those cities, all of them either charge a one-time $25 fee or a no fee, but they do have a registration process. However, all of those cities allow public or local payment or online payment. So what I'm requesting the city do is the following. To cancel amend ordinance 3238 and abolish the tax that supports the city of Colorado Springs, Colorado. If found in the best interest of the city to impose such a registration tax, then make the tax a one-time payment allowing citizens to pay it locally, online, or in person at City Hall in Bellevue, Nebraska, supporting our economy and not the economy of other states. Make sure that that tax is fairly enforced. Currently, only 33% of the alarm owners within the city, both commercial and residential, have paid this $25. 66% of the alarm owners have not paid anything. So it's not fairly enforced. So in conclusion, I am a has-been firefighter/paramedic, I have responded to false alarms. So I agree 100% with the fine portion of that ordinance. People should be responsible for their alarm systems, and they should maintain them. I have absolutely no qualm with that. But what I do have a problem with is that we pay a tax for the privilege of owning it, and that money doesn't support our city, it supports Colorado Springs. So that is, I am very adamantly against. And since there's no harbor and no tea in which for me to throw it into, okay? And in celebration again of our independence and my act of protest to the provisions of ordinance 3238 and the taxing of citizens in Bellevue for the support of Colorado Springs, I hereby submit my $25 fee for this year. And since I don't see the city administrator, I'm gonna give it to the...
He's right.
I didn't see him there, I'm just gonna give it to you.
I'd like a receipt for that.
Uh, no, it's public, I'll pay. So, ladies and gentlemen of this fine council and the citizens of Bellevue, thank you for allowing me to do that.
Kyle, thank you for being involved in the community. We've been in contact, and I know you've contacted other council members, and we do listen, we've been talking about this and working, and we really appreciate your input. Just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Burns, appreciate it.
Is there anybody who wants to give an update or any information on that?
I think, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but with ProPhoenix coming online in the next six months, there is a module that exists within ProPhoenix which would localize the majority of it. We just need to get a better understanding of what that does for us, correct?
Correct. I don't have a timetable on it, it's been slow. I anticipate that'd be probably within the year, I would hope anyway. But I was told that that module is very promising, it could take that over for us.
No, it's not public, no.
I'll make a motion to open it for public hearing.
A motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to open the public comment up to public hearing? For public hearing, and I will do that now. Sorry, we need a vote. I'm not king, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, and if anyone would like to speak, please come forward.
Thank you, name is Jim Modery, 1207 Rebecca Court in Bellevue. I'd like to thank Mr. Roan for bringing this up. This item was brought up to me by a constituent three or four years ago. And I looked into it a little bit at that time as well. Discovered that, yes, indeed, the registration fees each year went to a company in Colorado Springs. And some of the input I got from within the city at that time were that, you know, they required that registration so that, as he said, they would be able to know the location of those alarms so that they could know where to respond for a false alarm and be able to bill accordingly for false alarms and that sort of thing. And it would take an additional person's time and software or something else within the city to be able to handle that locally within the city, so... You know, it didn't go anywhere at that time, so I'm glad it's coming forward again. I understand the initial registration fee, but to do it every year, an annual re-registration, perhaps you could just have some kind of notice if the individual has removed the alarm or, you know, no longer using it or that sort of thing as you go forward. I'm glad to see this come forward, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Any further comments, questions? Councilman Shannon?
I just want to say thank you to the administration for being willing to listen and address some of these issues. I was one of the people that protested this when it first came up. This was completely usury from the very beginning. A billing fee for a billing company is typically 10%, not what this agreement was giving out. And so I've never been in favor of this, and I think the total lack of compliance is a protest on the citizen's part for how this has been handled. So I appreciate the willingness to listen and make changes, and so I'm looking forward to seeing this change within the next year.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, I, so what I heard is we have a program coming forward within the next year that should be able to handle this, and that's what we're gonna be looking at. So again, thank you Kyle. Move on to item number 10, Liquor Licenses. 10A Recommendation to Approve the Application of Margaritas LLC Doing Business as Los Tapatitos Mexican Bar and Grill For Class C Liquor License to Sell Beer, Wine, and Distilled Spirits on Sale Only At 3905 Twin Creek Drive, Bellevue For David Valdez as Manager. Is David here? Can you come forward, please? I won't make you talk, just in case somebody has a question.
Maybe we could get him to say the name.
Yep. Okay, just come up to the front. You're okay, we got your name. What's the name of the restaurant?
Los Tapatitos Mexican Grill and Bar.
I'll try to remember that.
Yeah, I have one in, I have one in 72nd and L, it's the Margaritas Mexican Restaurant.
Okay, you own them both?
Yeah, well.
Alright. Okay, if you just stick around and if there's any questions the council has, appreciate it just for a few minutes. With that, I'm gonna open the public hearing, so is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the liquor license? Please come forward if you are. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Is the council... I need a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you Mayor, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application of Margaritas LLC doing business as Los Tapatitos Mexican Bar and Grill for a Class C liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale only at 3905 Twin Creek Drive, Bellevue, Nebraska, and for David Valdez as manager.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stinson. Any questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, you're good, it's all good, thanks. Item 10B Recommendation to Approve a Special Designated Liquor License for R&amp;J Enterprise Inc. Doing Business as Jammers Pub At 1505 Galvin Road South For Beer Garden During Their Annual Luau on Saturday, July 27, 2019 From 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Is the applicant here? If you come up and state your name and address, it'd be perfect.
Thank you Mayor, I'm Rick Corbin, 2308 Plymouth Rock Road. I own and operate Jammers Pub right here at 1505 Galvin Road South.
Okay, and same thing, if you just stick around a few minutes, and I'm gonna open the public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against the liquor license for Jammers Pub? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Cook?
Thank you Mayor, and the only reason why I pulled this was because we had to have a public hearing on this, so it wasn't that there was anything wrong.
Okay, you confused me a little bit, but thank you.
No, no, everything's good. I'll make a recommendation that we make a recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the special designated license for R&amp;J Enterprise Inc. Doing Business as Jammers Pub At 1505 Galvin Road South For Beer Garden During Their Annual Luau On Saturday, July 27, 2019 From 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
I'll second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Shannon. Is there any further discussion or comments?
Yes, please.
Councilman Shannon?
Just in the interest of full disclosure, I am the property owner. I own Emporium Plaza, Rick's one of my tenants, and we're very proud of the 20-plus years that they've been there, and they're a great tenant, great Bellevue business, and this is gonna be a great event, so I hope everyone comes out.
This will be our 12th annual...
Okay.
So it's worked out well, thank you.
Congratulations. Any further comments, questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 11, Ordinances for Adoption, Third Reading, There Are None. Item 12, Ordinances for Public Hearing, Second Reading, There Are None. Item 13, Ordinances for Introduction, First Reading. 13A Ordinance Number 3951, Request to Rezone Lot 1 Wood Replat From RS72 to RD60 To Allow For Construction Of A Duplex. Applicant Paul Pignati, Location 7801 South 30th Street. It's first reading, so the second reading will be July 16, 2019. Item 13B, Ordinance Number 3952, Request to Amend Section 5.20 Of The Bellevue Zoning Ordinance Regarding The Permitted Number Of Full-Time Practitioners In A Medical Clinic In The BN Neighborhood Business District. Applicant, City Of Bellevue Planning Department. And that one as well will have a second reading on July 16, 2019. Item 13C, Ordinance Number 3953, Increase Pay For The Mayor And City Council Members. And that as well will have the second reading, July 16, 2019. All those will be here in the council chambers. Item 14, Public Hearing On Matters Other Than Ordinances. 14A Public Hearing For Draft 2019 Through 2023 Consolidated Plan And Action Plan, $355,531 In 2019 CDBG Entitlement Allocation, And $125,081 In Reallocated Fund From Previous allocations. Abby is here.
Alright, good evening. Tonight's agenda is the public hearing for our five-year consolidated plan, which includes our one-year action plan. In the five-year plan, it outlines our goals and priorities that we're going to achieve with CDBG money over the next five years. And then our one-year action plan outlines the proposed funding recommendation for our entitlement money we will receive for 2019, 2020. And in the action plan, our funds are allocated through an application process. We accept applications, they're reviewed for eligibility, and then we pass those along to our CDBG committee, who then spends time reviewing those, preparing questions. They then ask applicants questions before they prepare the funding recommendation that is then included in the plan. I know some of them are present tonight as well as applicants, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, thanks Abby. I will open a public hearing for anybody that wishes to speak on this CDBG plan.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. If you know me from before, the times I've spoken when I had a chance to speak, I still think we should have somebody here locally do this because I know Phil Davidson did it at one time. And why we have somebody from California flying in all the time? I don't understand that, I think it's just an extra amount of money we have to pay. We can have somebody here who's qualified to do this locally, save some money.
Public hearing is open?
Good evening, Jim Modery again. In looking through the recommendations for allocations for this coming year, I was not able to make some of the meetings that the committee had on this. But there was a request for demolition assistance that did not receive any money. I don't know if there's some reasoning behind that or what the thoughts were, if that was truly something that is eligible for CDB funds or not. So I don't know Abby, if you...
We'll invite her back up, do you have anything else?
On the request for the demolition assistance from Habitat for Humanity, they were requesting that to help with the flooding issue, and a lot of the homes that were flooded due to ownership concerns weren't eligible for demolition assistance, but also they weren't gonna be here in time. The funds that we're allocating out tonight probably will not come in till December, and we'll sign agreements with our subrecipients in January, so it was also a timing issue on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I was happy to see that the requested funds for facade improvements for a private business were not included, so thank you for that, that's all.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, is there any? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Abby, I got a couple of questions. On your priorities, I noticed they're numbered 1, 2, 3, 4. Is that in any particular order, is that four priority? I know that you have three of them are high priority and one is low priority.
The numbers really, it's just numbering them, so when I'm putting them into the system, I know which number it's referring to.
Okay.
It's really the high and low. High means if we have funds, we will, those will be the first things we try to address. Low, we know it's a concern, we know we need to address it. If funding is there, we will. But if the funds don't allow, then that may be the one that will be addressed last.
I guess I was surprised that we had three high and a low. I mean, there's no... there's no medium. There's, yeah, I mean, to me, either you're a high priority or you're number four. You know, I mean, so I, I just think that putting, I'll say, by putting what I would consider as projects all high, really, I don't know what that accomplishes if you're putting them all on the same table versus should one be higher priority, a medium, and a low, and a low, or whatever. I, to me, anything that's gonna be a project is, I'm sorry, one through four, is, to me, is a specific. I, I, you know, when I looked at this wrong, there are three high and two low, but it just seems to me, I guess for me, when I look at this, I look at, this is basically our money that goes to Washington and comes back to us. And I just think that they, they need to be projects that benefit our whole community. They need to be projects that, you know, we have some older parts of our communities, maybe they need, uh, if they, if they're selected in the CDBG areas. I know that sometimes it varies from year to year. But to me, I like to see projects that are more, that would benefit everybody in this room. If it's a sidewalk, uh, corner for handicap accessibility, or maybe improvements to a park. I know that we spent some money on a splash pad. I know that Public Works does a lot of, goes into these older neighborhoods and, uh, do, does a lot of, uh, street and co- curb repairs that benefits the whole city. And I, I think those need to be the priority. Now, I'm, I'm speaking for myself. One thing from going over where requested funding was and recommended funding, I, I, I'm very happy that, uh, the Public Works, the City of Bellevue got a significant part of this money to do projects that are in the city and benefit the city as a whole. And finally, what is the Housing Foundation of Sarpy County?
Well, I believe that applicant is here and could answer that better than I could.
Okay.
Hi, Carolyn Posposel, um, twelve oh-seven Casper Street, but I'm here on representing Housing Foundation for Sarpy County. Um, we are the nonprofit affiliate to the, to the Public Housing Authority.
Okay, I thought that.
So the properties that are being transferred are previous section nine public housing, and those are being transferred to the foundation. So the strategic planning and consultant for that is what that is.
Okay, so there's benefit for the City of Bellevue?
Oh, yeah, the entire.
I, I guess when I looked at it, in, in the somewhat of explanation, um, it made reference to when I read this, I, it didn't say specifically to the Bellevue Housing Authority.
Right, because it's a nonprofit affiliate.
I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, no, and it's not the housing authority itself, it's the five oh-one C three that's associated.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would just like to say I appreciate the transitioning that's happening with housing and Sarpy County Housing Authority in using some of the HUD, uh, housing and transitioning some of that.
Yep.
I, I think it's moving in a good direction, and I'm glad that we're funding the, uh, foundation like we are here. I also think the sidewalks are a broad public benefit founding, uh, for the city, and we've been trying to get sidewalks for a long time, so I salute what Public Works is doing also. And Washington Park needs those sidewalks and needs some improvement. I, I wanna salute Abby for what she's been doing in leading the committee, but I just wanna thank all of the committee members for due diligence in putting together some very good selections and screening out, as we've already heard from some of the public, the process. Uh, you get to feel a little like a councilperson and go through being pulled in different directions, but I think you've worked well together and done a good job. And I would get back to an earlier comment. I think the Bellevue, that Bellevue is very well served by having Abby Highland as the person working on this. She was a resident of Bellevue when her husband was stationed here in the Air Force, uh, through, uh, their choice to be in the Air Force and to be transferred out of Bellevue. She has remained here and is seen as an expert by the federal administration who has even attempted to hire her from us. We could not get a better, more qualified person and at a highly affordable rate of pay rather than a full-time salaried Bellevue resident person. So I think we've made the right decision, and that right decision is reflected in right results that I think all of us agree with, and these selections, I think, are good uses of money that we can spend. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Abby. Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, that resolution will, uh, did I close the public hearing? I'm gonna close the public hearing if I didn't. Um, that resolution will be moved to July sixteenth meeting here at the council chambers. Item fourteen B, approve event license application for Victory Riding Academy to host free event offering horse rides, games, food, and entertainment to honor military and first responders and their families at Hastings Banner Park on Saturday, September twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, from ten A M. to two P M. Set up on September twentieth and twenty-first with rain date September twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. I will open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak, uh, for or against the license application, special event?
Uh, Tony Barnes, Victory Run Academy, forty-five thirty-four Madison Street. I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to be able to, uh, do this event again this year. Uh, we had a great turnout last year. Uh, we usually hunt, uh, have it at Hayworth, uh, Park. Unfortunately, with all the flooding, uh, we had to find another park, and Mr. Preister was gracious enough to work with us on, uh, finding Hasty's Banner Park, which worked out fantastic last year.
Okay, thank you for being here. I, uh, uh, this is public hearing. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak for or against the license? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve fourteen A for, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on fourteen B. My computer isn't moving here.
Mine's not either.
The event license application for Victory Riding Academy to host the free event offering horse rides at Hastings Banner Park.
I'll second. Motion by Preister, seconded by Shannon. Any further discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Fifteen resolutions, fifteen B. Resolution number two-zero-one-nine-dash-nineteen, recommendation to approve the selection of B K D L L P to perform audit services for this, for the fiscal years ending two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three. Contract price for fiscal year ending two thousand nineteen will be five thousand five hundred dollars less than two thousand eighteen audit.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this item.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Any further discussion? Councilman Shannon?
I'd make a motion that we amend the agreement with B K D to call for rotation of the managing partners on this agreement, on this audit, uh, thereby providing the proper insight and meeting industry standards for, uh, rotation.
My only question would be is.
Can I have a second? Do you have a second for discussion?
Oh, I'll second it.
Thank you.
I have a question on the rotation, okay.
Motion to amend for the rotation of the auditor um, by Shan- uh, by Shannon, seconded by Cook.
Actually, not the auditor, it was the managing partner.
Sorry, rotation of the managing partner. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook. Now we can have discussion.
I just didn't know as far as the rotation, and I'd like to have input from Mr. Severson.
I'm gonna ask our, we have a B K D representative
Yep.
here with, uh, B K D, and we've discussed this, and we have had some rotation in the past since I've been here. And so, um, this is Amy Shrek from B K D. I think, uh, what Mr. Shannon has, uh, mentioned, that's, that's doable. It, we can, we can add that language to the agreement.
Good evening. I am Amy Shrek. I'm an audit director for B K D, and we have had some rotation that's just happened throughout the course of the engagement with Bellevue. I have been on for the last two years and was off for the two years prior to that. But we can certainly rotate, uh, in our lead audit partner from our Lincoln office as well, however frequently you would like. So that would be my only question would be, how often would you like that rotation to happen?
What is your recommendation, two years or three?
I would say at least three.
Three?
Three is.
And I, and I'm fine with putting that in my amendment, that we include language to have a three-year rotation. And that, and that would be good, but, uh, yeah, I mean, we're, we're just trying to deal with Sarbanes-Oxley, same way you are, so.
Absolutely, right. No problem at all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So Amy, before you leave, there's a, is that the right, uh, um, wording, rotation of auditing manager?
I would say engagement executive is the language that we use just to avoid the title differences, but we can work with whatever you need to make the resolution happen.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Um, just a question. I don't know, Amy, if you answer this or if this is for Rich, how long has B K D been our auditor?
Uh, longer than I've been here. I think you started way back in two thousand and?
I was going to say two thousand and six. I think was the first year that we performed the audit services.
Okay, so been with us thirteen years? And during that time, has there been this rotation that Mr. Shannon was talking about that has kind of automatically happened? Maybe through attrition, maybe through natural course of business type of thing?
Yes, it's, it's maybe not been every three years over the course of that thirteen, but we've certainly had different engagement executives involved based on our work assignments, people moving, people transferring, promotions, that sort of thing, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just like I'd like to add a comment. I think, I believe I've been on the audit committee since I've, uh, got on the council, which would have been, I'm in my seventh year. And I will tell you without a doubt, uh, the work and the performance that we get has been excellent, and I think it has played a significant part in our double, double A plus rating, which helps on bonds and everything. I think we also gotta realize that Rich has had some turnover in, uh, with his staffing over the last several years. Uh, he's, he's had different staff members, and I think the consistency of this organization has paid off only for the benefit of this city. And I, uh, I have no problem with rotation, but I wanna keep this company on board as long as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shannon?
And, and just a final comment for the public that's listening. The decision to keep the company or not is not ours to make here tonight. Federal statutes have seen fit to give that to the audit committee. So the audit committee has decided to retain them. Our discussion here tonight is to approve the agreement between the parties. So there, there is that fine line that's a little bit different than most of the items we take up where the committee brings us a recommendation. Federal statutes actually give the committee the decision in this case. So just FYI for the public.
And me. Thank you.
Oh.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we have, uh, motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook, to amend the contract with B K D to allow for a three-year rotation of the engagement executive. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. And we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch, to approve the amended resolution two-zero-one-nine-dash-nineteen. Any further questions, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, request approval of the agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Bellevue and Alfred Benish and Company for the alternative, alternatives evaluation of Fort Brook Road and Harland Drive, formerly Highway three-seventy project not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars. Councilman Burns?
I move to approve item sixteen D.
I'll second that.
Moved by Burns, seconded by Welch. To approve. Any further questions, comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Sixteen G, request approval and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal for Kinbrook Roofing, Inc. For eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the exterior renovation of the First Presbyterian Church. Councilman Burns?
I move to approve item sixteen G.
Moved by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a letter of intent outlining intentions of parties including this, including the City of Bellevue regarding certain real estate in which the city is interested in. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we move, that the city council move into a closed session at this time for protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session shall be for real estate discussion on property city is interested in. The following individuals will be included in closed session. All city council members, Mayor Rusty Heike, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Robbins, paralegal Tanyie King, Finance Director Rich, Tanyie King, Finance Director Rich Severson, Public Works Director Jeff Roberts.
Yep. Motion by, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Let me catch up here. Uh, any questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Just procedurally, are we going to go into closed session for this one item and then come back out of closed session, and then go back into closed session, and then come out of closed session, and then back in a third time? We can't do it all together clearly or efficiently?
We can't do it all together because of how it's listed on the agenda. Additionally, there's different people involved in all the different closed sessions. So the cleanest way to do it is go in, then come back out, go in, come back out, and do that the third time.
All right. Okay, motion by, let's see, motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to go into closed session. Please vote.
All voting yes.
This. Okay, go ahead. Okay. Did we vote?
It's showing.
Yes, yeah.
It passed, okay.
Yeah, it passed.
The city council has voted to go into closed session at this time. Subject matter will be discussed in closed session. Shall be for the real estate discussion of property city is interested in. The following individuals will be included in closed session. All city council members, Mayor Rusty Heike, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Robbins, paralegal Tanyie King, Finance Director Rich Severson, and Public Works Director Jeff Roberts. It is now six forty-seven, and we are in, going into closed session. And we are in, going into closed session. And we are in, going into closed session. Okay. 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 Any questions?
I'm going to abstain from this vote, and I have filed the proper paperwork with, regarding it. And I'm leaving the room.
Say we have a motion by Stenson, seconded by Shannon, to approve sixteen H. Kathy Welch has claimed a conflict and left the room. Are there, is there any further questions, concerns? Seeing none, please vote.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Five yes votes and one abstention, sorry.
Alright, so thank you, and does anyone have a motion for sixteen I? Oh, I'm sorry. Sixteen I is approve and authorize the mayor to sign a settlement agreement regarding liens on a property located within the city of Bellevue. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that I move that the city council go into closed session at this time for protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session is a settlement agreement regarding liens on a property located in the city of Bellevue. The following individuals will be included in closed session. All city council members, Mayor Rusty Heike, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Williams, Paralegal Tany King, and Finance Director Rich Severson.
Second. Motion by Cook, seconded by Stenson. Any questions? Please vote.
I vote yes.
I'm doing it for him.
It's a ghost.
All voted yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the city has voted to go into closed session at this time. The subject matter to be discussed is closed, in closed session is a settlement agreement regarding liens on a property located in the city of Bellevue. The following individuals will be included in closed session. All city council members, Mayor Rusty Heike, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Robbins, Paralegal Tany King, and Finance Director Rich Severson. It is now seven eleven, and we are in closed session.